County leaders, we pray that we, the council, are able to rely on thee for guidance this night. And we pray that we will listen to the proposals and information given by the audience here tonight and take it under consideration and with thy guidance make the correct decisions. And we pray for these things in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Pete. You would stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is approval of the agenda for tonight.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, a motion by Rob, a second by John Ed, and all those in favor?
I.
Next up is public comments.
Mr. President, under public comments, I'd like some gentlemen from Greenwood Franklin Burgersville Fire Department to come forward. On June 30th, 2021, the following Johnson County firefighters, Justin Leraway, Rob Stichler, Chad Tatum, and all of the Green Fire Department Dan Leila, if I get your names pronounced wrong, I'm sorry, of the Franklin Fire Department, Shawn Campbell from Burgersville Fire Department responded with Indiana Task Force One Urban Research and Rescue Team as an 80-person search and rescue team. The team responded to the Champlain Towers condominium collapse and suicide floor. Crews worked 12-hour shifts searching for and recovering victims in the large pile of rubble left behind from the June 24th building collapse. They worked roughly on four hours of sleep a day and spent their shifts on their hands and knees in the Florida heat and rain meticulously removing debris. Rescue crews pulled multiple bodies of all ages over nearly a two-week period. On December 11th, 2021, Burgersville Fire Department firefighter Shawn Campbell, Greenwood firefighter Bob Rob Stichler's teacher, were among 45 personnel from Indiana Task Force One, who once again answered the call when tornadoes tore through Mayfield and Dawson Springs, Kentucky, after twister slammed five states. Campbell's teacher conducted search and rescue operations through miles of destruction, working to recover and account for those missing. I thought it was appropriate that we show our recognition. Unfortunately, I told the gentleman that the county and their budget doesn't have appreciation certificates that I could find that would be appropriate. So we're going to give you what I think is just as good, and that's to give you our praise and our thanks. Randy, if you have any comments, or Mike, do you have any comments? Thank you. I can't imagine what it would have been like in those environments, and we appreciate you being part of Task Force One. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank all you gentlemen for coming out tonight, and thank you, Ron, for taking that up to recognize their service.
Well, well done.
Next on the agenda is the routine consent matters. These are routine routine items that we take in one lump sum. If there's anything that a member of the council would like to pull and put back onto the regular agenda, please let me know. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from John T., a second from John Ed. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Next, the Salary Ordinance Amendments, Additional Appropriations, Reductions, and Transfers, Health Department.
Good evening. Betsy Swerengen, Director of the Health Department. I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at what's first. Okay, first on the agenda is the CRI BP3. It's the change in salary based on the raises from last year. And then appropriating other, the remaining funds from the grant into the appropriate line items.
So these are all grant-based?
One and two are grant-based, yes.
I think it's fine to take one and two together. Any discussion from council?
A motion to approve one and two, and note that item two is requested to be retroactive to 12/30 of 2021.
A motion from Rob, a second from John T., all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item three.
Item three. Randy Pease retired this year after 34 years of service. So he was part of that 2013, this way before you guys, 2013 sick time buyout. That's when we merged our, I guess, what's that thing called, employee handbook? Right, okay, so we merged, we had our own employee handbook at the time. We had different sick time, we had different vacation schedules. So a bunch of our senior inspectors, John and a couple of the office ladies, took a huge hit on sick time. I think maybe they lost a couple thousand hours worth of sick time and stuff like that. So they allowed them to keep five of them. Randy is one of them, and then Bob will be my last one that we have to pay out for a certain amount of sick time. So in this whole, this whole request here, I'm asking to take money from the other environmental health specialist positions and refill the salary into Randy's, to refill Randy's line item that we had to pay out in the beginning of the year. Then what I would also like to do is, we've always had our inspectors ranked one through six, and that's based on seniority, and the pay is different in each, for each position. So I'd like to, with regard to Bob, who is my first environmental health specialist, none of these, let me state by saying this first of all, too, none of this money is an additional appropriation. It's salary that I have, and I would just like to move some of it around if it's okay with you. So I'd like to give Bob, who is my first environmentalist and has been there for 30-plus years as well, an additional kind of bump out of Randy's salary, move Jen and Liz up to what Randy was making because they are equal, Andrew down, and then it just, it just comes down in line. And then I'd like to fill the sixth environmentalist position at $45,000 with our, who was formerly our intern, Cassie Hall.
Will you be cutting anybody's pay?
No, nobody's pay will be cut. And this does stay within the salary parameters.
How was this going to? How's this going to carry over into 2023?
Well, what I did, the fifth and, trying to think, the fifth and sixth positions had more, the fourth, fifth, and sixth positions had more than the $45,000 in them, and Cassie's right out of, right out of college, and we just reduced that and added those monies to the other line items. It shouldn't affect anything next year budget-wise. We just felt that people who have been there for a longer time ought to be compensated and recognized in that $45,000 coming out of college as an environmental health specialist was an adequate wage, and didn't feel like we needed to leave extra in that line item. We could move it to the other positions. In addition to that, too, then I should say, then there's also, there was additional money from those salaries left over. I redid job descriptions for my clerk and for my office manager based on the sheer amount of workload that the two of them burdened, I mean, the burden is immense, particularly with the COVID clinic and the vaccination and the testing site. So the clerk position was actually changed from a one to a two based on the amount of workload, and that raise would stay within the salary parameters as well. And the office manager, although not reclassified, I was disappointed in that because of the amount of work Connie does do. I was hoping to split some of those excess monies from the environmentalist position into those two lines, into those two lines, or two salaries.
You indicated they were reclassified to Derwin Do.
We went through the, I went, Barb helped me go through the company that we used back for the salary.
Is there doc, I mean, we normally, when we've got this in the treasure and everybody else, we've got documentation.
I have this one.
Yeah, we didn't get any documentation.
Sorry, Barbie sent it to me. I guess I assumed it would be sent to you. I apologize for that. So I should have gotten that to Amy. I'm sorry, Amy.
And what is the summary on that?
Would you have to see it?
Yeah, because we normally review this.
I apologize. For the office manager and for, for the clerk, and they wanted to retitle the clerk to administrative clerk. I had asked for deputies, but I can't have deputies because I'm not an elected official. So that's where we're at.
The recommendation is we factor the position that comment, four, six, five comment factor points that recommend the position remain classified to comment to not exempt, become say with the common to pay range, and then goes on, and just my personal attitude towards this been very public that we need to have those for any reclassification. So thank you.
Absolutely. I'm sorry that, 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 that we, I missed you in that.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Am I, that's, am I correct to understand the clerk is being re-titled?
To administrative clerk.
Do we need to address that in a motion?
That was, that was their recommendation.
It says on here clerk instead of administrative clerk.
Administrative clerk.
Yeah, yeah. It says, only says clerk instead of administrative clerk.
Does that matter, Amy?
Yes, yeah. And, and office manager, no title change?
No title change on that. I wanted super added to the front of it, but they wouldn't do that.
We could do that for a day.
Get her sashed.
Yes. I motion to approve item C3 retroactive to 12/30/2021 as presented, and note that the title of clerk in C3H is requested to be administrative clerk.
So. Second. Have a motion by Rob, a second by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Can't tell you how thankful I am. You'll make a bunch of people very, very happy who have worked really hard in the last two years. So thank you.
While we have you up here, what's the latest of going on at Compass Park? I was over there a few weeks ago when they were all the way out around the curve. I went by the other day, and it wasn't quite as bad. So what's going on?
Those were some bleak times. I, the, we're in a down period right now. Everybody's kind of enrolled into a sense of security until another variant comes out or will hit spring break. I'm sure we'll get something as an effect of the Super Bowl parties, and then I'm sure we'll see something from spring break. But we're, we're kind of back down to a trickle right now. It ebbs and flows, and, and they, that was a rough time. People were rude, urinating in people's driveways and in their bushes. So we purchased, not purchased, but we went ahead and rented a porta potty from Julie's Johns for, for that, and they still continue to do that. They continue to block driveways and everything. We have people out there doing the best they can. And, and security, the sheriff's department and the city of Franklin coming through, you know, trying to keep people in line, but they wanted a test, they wanted it right then, and they didn't want to wait. Human nature, it seems like these days, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next up, statewide 911.
Keith Brand, 911 Director. So I'm just asking for $7,040.90 to purchase what's called data replication for our, what will likely be by the time it comes in as our, our new server that the council appropriated the money for last month. What this does is allows us to take all the different queries, all the different systems that are actually pulling data from the server, allows us to replicate that data to a separate location, and allows us to set up those queries onto that location so they're not actually querying directly to the server, therefore protecting our, the performance of our server a little bit. I know we've had some issues with some of the Greenwood Police stuff, queries there that almost caused our server to crash. So we're trying to rectify that. And it does have an annual maintenance of $609. I'm starting the second year.
That, that price is included, the maintenance price is included in this number, or? The $609, am I missing?
So the $609 would be starting second year.
Starting second year.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be until we've had it for a year. So that wouldn't be anything we had to add to it.
Okay. Very good.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion by John Ed, a second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Information Technology.
Christopher Williams, ITGIS Administrator. So the first item is to create a part-time position to take care of more of the clerical of the office and not much the technical, sort of like making sure the email and the phone records are up to date so that when you're searching for people in the phone database, you'll find them. So that when the members of our active directory, they're no longer employed by the county, they don't show up in the email list. If people change positions, then the position will be reflected in the email list.
There any opposition to taking both of these together?
I approve this. Yes.
So are we, so is this part of this part-time request of hourly rate of 18, or is this separate?
No, that is the part-time request. The hourly rate of $18 per hour and then per year would be 12,000.
Oh, I guess I meant, I see the two, line A and then line C.
Oh, line C is a creation, a change of salary for the other, another position.
Oh, okay. You've got a good job, I mean, important job.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, you asked, I think I would like to see the twos operated from one.
Okay, and we will separate them. Further discussion on item one?
Was there a second on that?
I'll second it. Okay. So Melinda, I'm confused now. We, we have a motion by Melinda, a second by Pete, to take both of them together?
No, no, I asked that we separate.
I know, but there's two.
I guess I jumped in early, so sorry.
Okay. Well, we've, we've got a motion and a second, so we're gonna have to take it, and if we don't want to do that, if we want to separate them, then the motion will not carry.
Oh, I let you ask that first.
I did.
Okay.
But then we had a motion and a second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
What is, what are we acting on now? If not sub to it?
We just approved one and two.
Nay.
Okay.
A and B.
A and B.
Wait a minute, I'm, how many are there here? A and B is the part-time, correct? And C and D is the help tech, help desk technician.
Correct.
Okay, I don't have a problem with A and B. I'm asking C and D be separated. I was looking at his, his letter that has. Okay, my bad.
All right.
I'll change my vote, I'll change my vote to aye.
Too late.
Okay. Item C.
Item C. Item C is to increase the current salary of the help desk technician from $39,000 to $45,000 to bring it in line with the salary study.
Any discussion from the council?
The commissioners approve this unanimously.
Well, it wasn't brought before the commission, the, I was informed by Commissioner Ver to come before you asked for the increase to bring it in line with the salary study.
Okay, and this, this one is not a change in the position?
No, we have gone without a help desk technician for most of last year. And so in order to bring it up with the salary study and to be competitive in the hiring market, then we really should bring it up.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused. So this last year, it wasn't where it was supposed to be? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the position wasn't filled for the past year.
No, I mean, the salary that we approved this last year for 2022, wasn't it the proper?
Correct. It wasn't at the high enough rate, but that's because we were putting off hiring a person for that position.
And isn't, isn't it the gentleman that sits here when you're not here?
No, he is the IT technician.
Oh, so this is a vacant position?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought he was the IT technician.
He is the IT technician.
This is, the help desk technician and IT technician are two separate positions?
Correct.
Okay.
Hey Chris, with the salary study, there's kind of like a matrix, which, which one are we bringing it up to? Do you remember? Is it the same, is it the same level that we increased everyone to last year?
Yes.
Last budget?
Yes, yeah, that's my point.
So the reason why this wasn't handled during the budget hearings?
Is because we were waiting to see how long we could put off hiring that, and we wanted to leave the position in the budget so that we had that option available. But now we need a new person in the office.
Okay.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. Got a motion by John Ed, a second by Rob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes. Item B. It's just.
That was.
Yeah.
So C and D together.
Okay. It passed.
It passed. Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of an agreement there. I don't like. Cumulative Bridge. Hi Luke.
Good evening. Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Want to point out that gentleman back here is Daniel Johnston. He is our new highway engineer, started last Thursday. So great, we'll see more of him as we go forward, hopefully presenting many of the things that I'm going to present to you this evening. Welcome. So the first group, the first fund of our additional appropriation requests is 1135. Generally, all of the requests that are on the agenda are re-appropriating funds for projects that are currently underway. These are funds that were available or remaining in those line items for funds that take, or phases, excuse me, that take multiple years. So under 1135, Bridge 66 and Bridge 98, those are two projects that are currently under design. This would reappropriate the design funding that had already previously been appropriated last year. Bridge 96 is an appropriation to help cover the local portion of a reimbursable utility cost on that project. Construction is already complete. This would just finalize that reimbursement agreement. I can keep going or I can stop at each fund, however you'd like to handle it.
Mr. President, I would like us to take these by fund number.
That's all right.
Yeah, that's my.
All right.
Are you prepared to entertain a motion?
I am prepared.
All right. I'll motion to approve items 6A, B, and C as presented.
A motion by Rob, a second by John T. All those in favor? Aye opposed? Passes. And seven.
Next fund is 1138, the cumulative bridge portion of 1138 of the four projects listed. The bridge inspection would appropriate the amount that was remaining at the end of 2021 to finalize our 2018 to 2021 inspection contract. There is money in that line item currently that is intended to fund our 2022 inspection work. Bridge 38 is currently under construction, so this would cover the local portion of construction inspection fees. Bridge 602 and Bridge 136 are under design. And in addition to that, Bridge 136, we are finalizing right-of-way acquisition, so that is a portion of the amount that's being appropriated.
Further discussion with council?
A motion to approve items 7A, B, C, and D as presented.
Second. Motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight.
Item number eight is Fund 1169, Local Road and Street. I'll start with B real quick. That is Fairview Road and Peterman Road intersection. That appropriation is intended to cover the outstanding construction inspection costs, the local portion of those for that project. The intersection did open before the end of last year, but there's some minor work that needs to be done in the spring. A, our asphalt concrete aggregates line item. I'll actually touch, jump ahead real quick. There are a couple of other additional appropriations. Everything that's in nine, and then 10C, those are outstanding costs for either work that was completed in 2021, but not invoiced or not, the invoices came in late. Were not able to be paid in 2021. Additionally, there's some in-house work that we ran out of time and we're not able to complete. So those costs are being carried forward to 2022 so we can complete that work in the spring.
Any questions for Luke?
I'll motion to approve items 8A and 8B as presented.
Second. Motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, 1173.
Item nine, 1173 is our NVH restricted fund. Again, both of those additional appropriations are for work that still needs to be paid out of our annual maintenance program for last year, whether it's in-house work that we weren't able to complete or outstanding invoices for work that was completed towards the end of last year.
I did also a motion to approve items nine A and B as presented.
Okay. Motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, 1176. Motion passes. Item number ten, eleven seventy six.
These are additional appropriations in the unrestricted MVH fund eleven seventy six. Item A, gasoline surcharge line item. This balance is carried forward every year. This is the five cent per gallon surcharge that's collected for everyone that feels at the fuel site that helps us. Pay for maintenance and upgrades on the site as needed. Item B in professional services. This is the remaining amount of our work management program software upgrade that will be billed this year. Item C, similar to nine, A, or excuse me, eight, A, and two in nine. That is for work either invoices that were unable to be paid out of last year's budget or work that we need to finish again this year. That was in last year's program. The item D is our Stones Crossing Road and Saddle Club Road intersection project. There's several different items that are included in this overall request as well as eleven A, which is the next item. This project goes to bid and end up bid lighting next month. So this appropriates the remainder of our design fees plus some reimbursable utility costs. And an estimate of what our construction match that needs to be paid to end up once the project lets for bid. That cost is included in there as well. Can E?
Sorry. I have a question on gasoline surcharge. Mention something about those who fuel from. From our fuel. Correct. Who who is that?
We have an interlocal agreement with the city of Franklin. So all of the city of Franklin vehicles fuel there. In addition to that, access Johnson County, we have an agreement with them. They feel all of their unleaded vehicles.
And we charge back to them.
Correct.
Okay.
And then item ten E, our worst the road and Clark School project. We are waiting a pretty significant utility reimbursement bill. For some Duke Energy polls that were within easement that had to be relocated as part of the project. There is federal. Funding involved in that reimbursement. So. But this is a pretty, pretty significant amount. We're just waiting to receive the invoice.
I will motion to approve. The eleven seventy six funds, ten, A, B, C, D, and E as presented.
Second. A motion by Rob, a second by Ron. All those in favor? I I oppose. Motion passes. Number eleven eighty two forty one.
So item eleven is the creation of a reimbursable fund. For our saddle club and stones crossing road project. This is for the amount that we anticipate being reimbursed for construction inspection costs. Those reimbursements coming from end up. So we have to pay those costs upfront. We submit a voucher to end up to receive eighty percent of those fees back. This line item. Is how we track those reimbursable fees, how the state board of accounts has asked that we do that. So anytime we have reimbursements like that, this is we create either an eight thousand or nine seven thousand series fund for that specific project.
This good path for the auditors. Perfect. Thank you. I'll motion to approve eleven eighty creation of the. Eight two four one account and appropriation as requested.
Second. Motion by Rob, second by John Ed. All those in favor? I I oppose. Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is the drainage board.
Brought some boards.
Commissioner, could you be the easel?
Commissioners this morning didn't get. For the record, Greg, Campwood Johnson County surveyor, if I could, if you'll allow me to kind of give you an update from where we left off last time. And then go over our plan and then we can hit those requests. That's right. We've had two objectives. One, our drainage standards, the other, our regulated drains. Our drainage standards, which were what we brought before you last year. At that time, we explained that the county drainage regulations are four pages. Out of the subdivision control ordinance. That subdivision control ordinance has a birthday this coming Saturday. It'll be twenty years old. What? We did was we engaged hired Burke Engineering as our consultant. We are developing a stormwater ordinance and a set of technical standards. The process will be complete this year. And when complete, Johnson County will have the newest, most comprehensive stormwater management in the state of Indiana. But the first time we're going to be in front of the situation. Our second objective regulated drains. Per state statute, the county surveyor is the county's expert on drainage. But to be honest, what I'm about to go over. It's kind of hard to grasp. Johnson County has forty nine watersheds. In reality, we've got many. Regulated drains, and there are many regulated drains within those watersheds. These individual drains are combined into forty nine watersheds or perhaps better. Accounts. These accounts make it easier to track. They also allow us to accumulate more money within those watersheds. So that we can take on larger costs, bigger maintenance projects. Our entire assessment annually is three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, give or take. This is based on a flat rate of assessment. Of those forty nine watersheds, thirty seven of those have a flat rate of a dollar twenty or a minimum of ten dollars. Johnson County has bought over four hundred miles of legal gray. Or two point one million feet. The drains were established or constructed in the early to mid eighteen hundreds. Post and pre civil war. Many of these drains. Were hand done. They were designed for the purpose of draining farm ground. For crop production. Because of growth and development, Johnson County. Has shifted from that northwest corridor to a more central and east quarter of growth. In that central and east corridor, that's where our regulated drains are. In the last two years, millions and millions of square feet of hard surface, impermeable surface has been added to those watersheds. This impervious surface has been placed within these watersheds. These watersheds and drains were originally done to handle crop production. Not development and not development to the extent which we're seeing today. Our plan for the update of watersheds. Watersheds in our drains are our combination of swells and creeks and ditches. Tides. The watersheds were established by state statute and by state statute, they're maintained by the county surveyor in the drainage pool. The majority of our watersheds are what we call rural. Only a handful of our watersheds have been designated urban. With the change in land use with development, it's kind of flip flopped. The majority of the drains are being used as if they were urban instead of. Johnson County watershed maps and our assessments. Are out of date. Our phase one. Will address the updating. Of our physical maps. And phase two will address our reassessments of those. We present five phases in our plan. Phase one, update the county watershed space to update our schedule of assessments. Phase three, phase three is actually part of phase two, but it's so significant. It's probably the hardest of them. And that's the hearings for those reassessments. So we made that a phase three. Phase four would be preliminary study. That's where we're we're going to go look at each drain. And phase five is the physical reconstruction of those drains. In phase one, we're physically going to change our maps. Our watershed maps are based on paper maps from the nineteen eighties. A lot of growth and a lot of development have had since the nineteen eighties. There are areas that. The watershed. Perhaps a parcel adjacent to a watershed has developed. And they are now discharging their drainage into that watershed. So there's a lot of those areas that we cleaned up, properties that need to be brought in. There are parcels that aren't being currently assessed. Municipal parcels. There are some exempt parcels, state highways, roads, even rivers. According to state statute. Everyone that benefits from that watershed, from that drain. Should be assessed for the maintenance of that drain. So what we're going to do in phase one is we're going to utilize. An outside contractor to come in and help us look at the GIS, the contour maps. They'll go to the cities and they'll look at the storm sewers and they'll redraw these physical maps in order that we can capture. Everyone that's benefit from those maps. Once we capture them, we'll have to have hearings and we'll bring them into the fold. And it's our plan to assess them at current rates along with everyone else in that watershed. Phase two, which will kind of happen at the same time. Is that we're going to look at how those watersheds are assessed. Currently, we have flat rate. We have a couple of flat rates that were a flat rate, the one point. Example, Shelby County has a flat rate of five dollars per acre or a minimum of fifty dollars. That's across the board. There are other counties that have tiers. They may have a flat rate for agriculture, one for residential, one for commercial, and one for industrial within a watershed. There are also. Such as Hamilton County, Hancock County, even the city of Greenwood with their stormwater utility. They base it on usage on that hard surface. Naturally, those farms don't have a hard lot of development in a hard surface compared to the industrial guys that have parking lots, roofs, driveways. So. By addressing it per use, it's more fair because. The guy that's benefiting the most is paying the most. When we get done with that phase two, it will probably be a combination of all those flat rates. And of the usage rates depending on the classification of that legal gray. The phase two, we would like to enter into now and get started on it. So that during twenty twenty three, we can have those hearings. And then establish and start assessing in twenty twenty four. Phase three, because we broke that out, that's going to be the hardest one. Example, one of my best examples is Coles Department Store, City of Frank. In the nineteen eighties, that was Mrs. Green's farm. It was two or three hundred nice acres of farm ground, nice brick ranch house, barns. Coles came in, development came in. Coles has nine acres, just under one acre of that sheds water to the Canary, according to our maps. When they develop that site, the entire nine acres down is concentrated into a pond, and that pond discharges to the Canary. On top of that. The. Properties along US thirty one. Discharge into the coal system, which discharges to the Canary. So we've got Coles paying ten dollars. In storm in our in our fees, and the guys out on thirty one, they're not paying anything. That's what we want to recapture. But when it comes time to reassess, you've got companies that are paying ten dollars and they're going to be paying thousands of dollars. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a hard build to swallow. So that's why we broke phase three separately, because that's that's going to be probably one of the most important parts we do. Base four and base five. Phase four is where we actually get down and study each ditch. Who's using it? What are they using it for? And what kind of conditions? That's where we come up with an engineer's estimate as to what it's going to take to get that back into shape. Which leads to phase five, which is the physical reconstruction of those drains. Phase four and phase five, we will. On a few of our ditches, jump into some of those face form face fives before we get the other phases done. Example. We just finished a reconstruction hearing for a section of Scott Hydrage. This is a drain up in Greenwood, east of sixty five, south of Main Street. Some of the the major players in here, Amazon, FedEx, that's the area we're talking about. We hired an outside engineer. They did a study on this ditch and they came to us and they said, in order for this ditch to be reconstructed, we're looking at three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. We had our hearing and surprisingly, none of those benefit parcels came into the hearing. So the hearing's done. We're finishing up our reconstruction plans, our final plans, getting our permits, and we will break ground on that construction this year. It's important that we take a few of these. Trial areas because we've never done anything like this. It's brand new to us because we've never reconstructed these niches. Other counties have some of the other counties that are growing. It's nice to be able to talk to their surveyors, their drainage boards to to kind of learn their process and how they're doing it. It's nice to have the. The engineers, the consultants to help us through the process. But we really have to take on a few of these at front so that we can have the experience so that we know what's coming. Because once what we do here tonight takes off. This thing's just going to boom. And in the next five, ten, maybe fifteen years to get this done. It's going to be important that we have some of those already under our belt. I can answer any questions you might have.
Greg, is the drainage board a hundred percent behind? Is it unanimous?
They are. In fact, I brought my commissioner rent as my backup man.
Thank you.
Is this something that can be paid out of?
Is this something that can be paid out of?
So the. You're, you explained the need. Thank you. So the request. Is the next part and, and your presentation here that you have what you're asking for.
My first request. Item one, one, five, seven, three, one, zero, 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 one, one, nine. Drainage Board Professional Services. Their request is for an additional appropriation of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. If you look just under that, this is the. Outside contractors fees to get us through phase one and phase two.
Well, you'd be needing additional funds later, how far do you foresee that happening?
As, as far as additional funds in phase one and phase two, this will be our biggest, our biggest thing. We will have advertising and inner office costs related to this, but they can be handled through what's already in the budget.
So line item one, the hundred and thirty-two. Is. Not coming from any budgeted item, is that correct?
There is an item. A professional services fund.
But you're requesting it from food and beverage.
I'm addition, yeah, an additional to pay for these two items.
Okay. And. What you sent us on the two hundred thousand. You put up at the top twenty GDI fund balance. Budget appropriation and outstanding CD guy, GDI. Last year, we had a discussion, I'm trying to remember what it was about. Certain things that couldn't come, that was about personnel issues, wasn't it?
It was not related to the.
Not related to this, okay, so these items, could you explain the second memory you sent us?
Yes, the second request for appropriation, one, one, five, seven, four, one, zero, 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 one, one, nine. Drainage Board GDI Fund. The name is by state statute, that's what it's called. I know Amy and, and the auditor, they don't like calling it a fund. For the purpose of explaining what it is, let's call it a bucket. And it's a big bucket. And what this bucket does is each. Watershed has its own maintenance bucket. Everybody within that watershed pays a maintenance fee. Annually goes into their little bucket to be used for their maintenance. But there are many times and many instances when those buckets don't hold enough funds. To do what needs to be done to that ditch. It's those moments where we reach into that big GDI fund bucket. And pull money in so that we can put it in the small bucket, it's a loan, for lack of a better word. They're loaning from the big bucket. So that they can get that project done, when the next year's assessments come in. They first go to pay that loan back to the GDI and then whatsoever left accumulates again as their maintenance fund is a little bucket. We anticipate that as we go through this process. The GDI funds is going to need to be big. Particularly what we plan with this two hundred thousand. I've got, for lack of a better word, four step job. They're evil step jobs, I can say that, I don't have to be politically correct on survey. My four evil steps, oh, Scott Hybridge. Canary Ditch. Hurricane Ditch and Amity Ditch. If we were sitting on the Starship Enterprise right now, them red lights would be flashing, we'd hear that. And. Captain would be pushing that button saying, Scotty, give me a report. Those ditches are critical. Canary alone starts, everybody's familiar with Whiteland Orchard. It starts north of Whiteland Orchard with all that development and comes south through Cooper Tire. Even further south, all the way through Frank. The nice big housing addition in Whiteland behind on Whiteland Road behind the jewelry shop. That pipes over a mile over to Canary Ditch. The new development, the mixed use development of Whiteland Road and Graham that was in the paper. Canary Ditch. Next week, the city of Frank will approve a development of a site. On the west side of Graham Road, south of four hundred, that's that field there. Everybody's familiar with, when you come down Graham Road, how close that ditch is, that's our ditch to the road. That farm field, a year from now will be millions and millions of square footage. Of those big old warehouses.
Oh boy.
That is critical, because this ditch, again, it's just a farm ditch. I've got the same thing and I, they're in the very back of your sheets, what's happening on the east side of Franklin with the, with the Amity. There's almost nine hundred acres in the next year will pop and will be under roof. That ditch is so flat, it's, it's about seven and a half miles long, it's called Amity because it goes all the way through Amity. But there's a section in there that within three miles, that ditch only falls two feet, it's flat. And yet we're one who put all this development in there and I can't stop the development. The development's going to happen, it's the city's control, all we can do is maintain that ditch.
Excuse me, Greg. With the new development, is it not mandated that they? Have some type of drainage pond or reservoir, seems like whenever there's new development, there's always like a big pond or drink. Now, does that help mitigate what you're talking about or does it, is it like a? Almost doesn't take, put a dent in it or?
It does help.
But it's not enough?
The city of Greenwood has the best ordinance currently as far as stormwater, city of Franklin has a very good one. And in those ordinances, new development, they go to ponds and those ponds do hold stormwater and release it. At a slower rate. My gosh, guys, the amount of water that they're holding and releasing. One of the biggest things that is not covered under any ordinance until we get ours done. Is the fact that they release those storms that are less than the two-year storm. Are unrated. That means if you have a ditch that has been a rural ditch and it's flat and maybe even it dries up. It will not dry up, it will be a constant flow. And that constant flow will cause that ditch to leave its banks, it'll erode. That and there will be floods, it's, we've got evidence right here in this building. That it's not if there's going to be a hundred-year flood, it's when. When those banks overflow with that hundred-year flood, it's coming right here to this bill. And it'll happen, the Scott Hybridge in front of us. In that study, we found that that ditch was a ten-year ditch. It could handle a ten-year storm. As an example, what a ten-year storm is, that's what they design inlets in roads to handle. That little grate, that's a ten-year storm, that's what this ditch is capable of taking on. When we get done. We're going to take that. Rural ditch and we're going to shelter it. We're going to mimic what mother nature does and we're going to build an area for that flood plain to collect. When we get done with that and hopefully when we get done with all our pitches, they're going to handle those hundred-year storm events. And that's what it needs.
Commissioner, Commissioner, well, you have any additional comments that?
Kevin Wells, Johnson County Commissioner. I sat on the drainage ward and I've rode through this thing with Greg since I've been on here and it has been an ongoing problem. And when you're looking at all these ditch assessments and what we have in those funds, they're all red. And that's, I think, what really struck us up to do this, we've got to get ahead of the game because there's so much development coming to the county. It's here, we want to get in front of it because if we don't, it's going to be a catastrophe. So I support everything Greg's doing here, it's needed to be done for a long time with twenty years not looking and checking balance. And it has, you, everyone here cannot dispute that it is exponentially growth of this county over the last twenty years. And it's going to get even worse in the next ten, because you got an interstate coming through on the west side, there's going to be a lot of businesses relocated in this county. So just trying to stay ahead of it is always trying to do and just supporting them in any way I can.
Specific questions about the amounts that are being requested this evening, those are additional appropriations out of what, the general fund?
Yeah, and beverage.
I'm sorry, food and beverage, specifically both.
Now, the settings you guys had for the Scott ditch. What came out of those, is there increase in fees to these companies or is it still a flat ten dollars or whatever? What will happen in this? The. We have several options in how we pay for those reconstruction. It, it's really kind of cool because the surveyor, the drainage board, we can actually go to private banks. It's possible for local private banks to loan a watershed money for reconstruction. That's one option, another option will be bonds. At this point. The Scott Hybridge has a pretty decent balance along with grabbing some more money out of that big bucket. That's how we're going to initially pay for that reconstruction. But each of those parties. That you see highlighted here, that are the beneficiaries of that reconstruction will have a special assessment. In which we take that final number of what it costs and assess them over five years for that reconstruction. As they pay that back, that money will then return back to GDI.
And is that state formulated the five-year?
Yes.
So.
They have an option to clean it off upfront if they want. I don't think Amazon has that kind of money.
All right, so if one, if one, yeah, no, according to Ron West, they do with all the. The. The, the payback period then. Well, the, the general citizenry. The homeowner itself is not impacted by, by this unless they have. Land that is drained by it, is that?
On this particular one, there are no residential properties.
No, I mean, when you were explaining the different ones, you said like Coles.
Eventually, we will be looking at fixing ditches in areas that do have residential. At this point, we're going to use the same formula that we're using for annual assessments as far as the percentage. How it's divided up. But within that reconstruction hearing, you are actually allowed to adjust. And do your, your, whatever you feel is right. With those assessments, you have a hearing and then you have their input.
So, but this is, I'm not, I, I know I pay the fifteen dollar every three months or four months or whatever it is. Under Greenwood Stormwater Utility, which is in, you know, that's equal to three or four Big Macs and, you know, for over a period of four months. So I think it's reasonably the normal citizen can afford that. But when you talk about using your Coles example where they pay, would you say ten?
Ten dollars.
And then they'll be paying.
It'll be in the thousands.
A year?
Yes.
Over five years?
No. Because we're not talking about reconstruction, we've got two different things we're talking about. One's the annual maintenance and the other is a reconstruction assessment.
Okay.
So that, that ten dollars that they're paying is their annual assessment for maintenance.
Okay.
At some point in that phase two will raise those annual assessments or maintenance. To be proper to what it takes to maintain. If we come along and decide, hey, Canary Ditch needs reconstructed. Then on top of that, there would be an assessment for that reconstruction, that would be a special assessment, another hearing.
Okay, so for example, I'll use like the bowling alley over there on thirty-one, if they were somehow involved with one of these drainage ditches. There would be two things, they might be paying an annual. Or however it's computed assessment. But then they possibly might be involved in a reconstruction assessment over five years.
Correct.
That would be dependent upon the surface, the hard surface, the roast, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I understand all that, so. They will know that that's going to be a thousand or ten thousand.
Yes.
And then the drainage. I understand when you say it's fair, but then will fairness reach a point where it could destroy a small business? With the assessment, I mean, I, I'm, you're sure where I'm coming from.
At that point, that's, that's why we have here. That's why we bring the, those people that are benefiting from the drain in and say, hey, this is our plan. This is how it's going to affect you, let's hear it.
But it also increases the value of the property, am I not right?
It could, it could bring, i- if you widen and take in some of that flood plain, it will. Take away some of those properties that are in a theme of floodway or a flood plain. It, it'll bring some of that water back into the ditch. So it will have benefit.
Okay, we've run out on forty minutes on this topic, so, so to be respectful to all those in the audience that still have to present tonight. I think. We should move forward and try to come to an agreement on item twelve. I will just say. I, I won't support it out of, I think it's, I think you're spot on, we have to do it, I will support it, I will not support it out of the general fund. If it can be paid for out of the ARPA fund. Sorry, food and beverage. We struggle every year to. Balance that fund and drawing three hundred thirty-two thousand dollars out of it would be a pretty significant hit.
Except we did receive a report about. Do you have, well, did you, everybody receive the report about what food and beverages went up?
Yeah.
I mean, it is. Going up.
That's. Right now.
It's got a balance of roughly two point one million.
It's got a balance of roughly 2.1 million and we're looking to give it a 300 plus thousand dollar hit. I'm in favor of it. I just can't, I can't support it out of the food and beverage. Anyone willing to make a motion on this?
Commissioner, what do you think?
I mean, if you don't do anything with this, it's going to, look, you want to talk about your ARPA funds? I, how would you proceed if it doesn't come out of ARPA funds? I mean, there's a lot, I know there's some open, the, it keeps changing, our fund structure keeps changing, what you can and what you can't use out of it. Would this qualify under it? It probably would, but we'll put it in front of the committee and see what they look at. If it, there's a lot of other, as you can, as you well know, there's a lot of money in the ARPA fund and there's a lot of hands coming into the pot right now, trying to get a hold of that. And there's some big things throughout the county that we're addressing. If it doesn't get through the ARPA committee, which would be all, you know, who it's made up of. Would it be, what, what would, I guess, what would be your reaction if it says no in the ARPA funds? Would it be still a negative no?
I don't, honestly, Commissioner, I mean, I don't know that I want to commit to that tonight.
It's a hard, it's a hard commitment for me because I'm one of many on this. I mean, we're going to have discussion on that this week and there's, we can add this, you might add that on to the list.
So every budget year, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul out of that food and beverage.
Oh, I understand. I mean, there's only so much money to go around, but you look at, you've probably got all the numbers, you gave them all the numbers for the total reconstruction, the assessments and all that stuff. I mean, that's, it's a huge number and it's a speculative number right now, but it's a huge number, the 417 million dollars. Because we don't know.
Sure.
It, it's kind of unknown, 417 million isn't anything to sneeze at. I don't know if it'll end up there. Projected cost increases, all that. The only thing I would say, we'll just push it through till the meeting and, and see what kind of appetite there is for that. I mean, we just got to really, I mean, that money we've got for that, it's going pretty fast. It's getting dedicated pretty quick and a lot of good ideas, a lot of, a lot of different ways for going with it. So.
Yeah, I just look at it as when we're talking this amount of money out of the food and beverage fund. That's a big chunk compared to that little slice out of the ARPA. So, but I get that there's a whole lot of little slices coming out of that.
There's pretty big slices that are projected to come out of that. So I guess your flavor then tonight would be just to kind of wait on the ARPA funds instead of putting anybody under the gun tonight, asking for a vote and doing all that. Would that be a fair assessment with the council?
Well, what would be the, I understand what you're saying, Jim. What would be the timing though? If, if this goes to our committee and is reviewed and if our committee made a suggestion, then would, when would it circle back here is my question.
Next month. We're going to meet later this week.
You'd be ready for it to come back next month?
Yes. Yeah. I see any reason that it couldn't.
All right. Let's just see where it goes with ARPA and instead of putting you guys under the gun tonight, we'll just wait and see what, what happens. Would you be willing to share out ARPA? I guess I'd ask you that. Maybe a 50 50 split.
More palatable to me.
We got three members of the council on the committee, so.
Yeah. So it'll be negotiated.
Always willing.
Always willing to negotiate so much. So, okay.
It's an important project. It is. Like, we can get there.
It's just something that's been neglected for 20 years, as you can well see, and we need to get in front of it. So you guys got more on your agenda.
That was an excellent presentation, Greg. Thank you. Greg's phenomenal. I think one of the items carried over from the budget hearings, we, it was us, in this context of, of this happening, there was the potential for staff additions, staff adds. Do I, do I remember like more personnel needed? So I, I think maybe when we do meet again, if you could have kind of that forward looking, this is what my department is today. If, if this happens, this is approved and we move forward, my department goes to this. Kind of refresh us where we are on that.
Well, it's, as a heads up, the Hamilton County, as an example, the one department that grows every year, the surveyor. This is why.
Well done.
If this project moves forward, the auditor's office, and I've watched it for years, so I'm supportive of what Greg is saying. But the auditor's office, just so you'll know, moving forward, plays a huge part in working with the surveyor's office on monitoring the funds, the collection of the money, the dispersment, the balancing. And a project this big, I can tell you right now, is not, there's not an available staff member. Greg and I have talked about this. There's not, and I, I believe statute says has to be this office. So, and we've had several meetings and looking down, down the tunnel, and I won't be around, but it, it is going to be, it, it will require additional staff in the auditor's office just to keep up with the project.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Greg. That was a, that was a great presentation. Yeah, I think we need a motion to table.
So move.
So a motion by John Ed, a second by Pete. All those in favor? I, I oppose. Passes. Table until the March meeting. Community corrections adult grant. He's not online? My recommendation would be to table it until he can be here.
Make a motion to table.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We, we've got. We have accounts in the red. You have people that aren't going to get paid if this gets tabled.
I understand, but if it was that important, maybe he would be here to present it.
We agree completely and that's, that's what we've asked, but kind of ties the auditor's hands in, in dispersing this money and getting payroll paid and, and taxes and things. So these numbers here, Amy has worked with their department, correct, in doing exactly what needs to be done. We, we, we done this work for him.
So Amy did the work.
Yes, we've done this work for him.
Thank you.
So so it is kind of important that, that this information get reviewed and possible tasks this evening, knowing that our department has worked with him hand to hand. And by that, I mean, we did work. So.
Well, then will you be making the presentation? On this?
I can't answer that question. I'm sorry. My guess would be no.
Okay.
We don't get, we don't get much communication from you. So I'm going to do a gene here too.
He did send that email. I think it was today. Did you?
Yeah, I saw. Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve. Community correction. 13A through T and 13.5 as presented.
Have a motion by John Ed. Is there a second?
A little second.
And a second by Pete. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes six to one. Okay. Item 14, Bossia.
Lauren Rainier, send the Bossia director. Item number 14 is the Bossia guardianship fee fund. A through D, we would like to appropriate volunteer favors, food, travel and training and promotional. Item number 15 is the Bossia donation fund. We would like to use the remainder of our funds and appropriate it to promotional. Number 16 is the Bossia 2022 grant fund. We need to reappropriate our money so we can pay the assistant director an increase in her salary from the salary study that we just did. Retro to December 30th of 2021, the increase is from 42,588 dollars per year to 48,491 dollars. And item number 17 is the Bossia 2021 grant. The money that was left over that we did not use, we want to put it towards professional services for our attorney fees.
I have a question about 16B, same question you heard previously about was this Irwin, is there a letter with this one?
Yes, it should be in the package from the Sower study.
I, I think predominantly what you're seeing here is a couple of issues. First of all, I think it was determined that the assistant director, she did not have a job description prepared positions period last year. Job description. Apparently, I guess in that process and then that information got fed to the consultant. Consultant came back with a recommended salary. Of course, the amount was paying less than that recommended salary. Of course, the assistant director said, yeah, I need that salary that consultants has a worth. So that's kind of what's going on in that part. The I, I think the request is to pay that out of the 2022 grant state. Rest of that is then reallocating funds to favor the increase. There's also a second issue which we identified in the 1415 where Bossia earns funds from serving individuals primarily nursing homes, but from Medicare funds or the, I'm sorry, Medicaid funds. The individuals can allocate $52 a month towards private needs. 35 of that can go towards professional services such as gardening. So 35 a month from each individual that we're serving on Medicare. And this amounts building up one thing the state stressed is that team money needs to be used for programs. And grant at the same level. I don't believe that was going to issue program, but it will be an entry next year. And we'll also be using some of these funds to pay some of the expenses. One thing though, that we are asking for your consideration of promotional. That's basically would be an allocation amount to the Johnson County Foundation. The donation fund was actually involved in Lauren's first couple of months in office and she organized a fundraiser. And that was the money received from that. Our goal was to create a fund that ultimately could build and hopefully then provide a funding social program so that we're not as dependent upon government funding. Ultimately, hopefully provide a funding mechanism for the future. But she had a fundraiser and that's a result of that, of course. I think it's been like a month of the program then COVID hit and that's pretty much shut down all fundraisers. The difference, promotion under 14, we're asking for an amount for the P fund. Basically to come up with 10,000 because that's how much Johnson County foundation says they have to have to establish a fund. Basically, one time about on the program and hopefully then Lauren can work on raising in the future to help grow that. Guardianship, so that's the idea is those who can use to help.
Discussion from the council.
I'm in favor of it. It's such a valuable program. Throw my support.
That sounded like motion.
Okay, it's a motion to approve. Item 144203. I think number 4111. 16, number 9138, 17, number 9129. And then I need to go back here on item B and 16, request increase salary from 42,588 to 48,491. And that's retro to 123021. Did I hit it all?
I think you did. Second, a motion by John T., a second by Rob. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye. I oppose. Passes. Right.
Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. It is still before midnight, I think.
And I'm in big trouble.
I'm here before you to get approval of ordinance 2022 dash 01. It's an ordinance adopting Johnson County investment policy, authorizing the investment of public funds in investments lasting more than two years and not more than five years. Earlier today, we had a board of finance meeting and we revised our investment policy for the county to accommodate this longer maturity date of our investments. And the second part of, of the county being able to move forward with investments more than two years, but no more than five is this ordinance.
Is there any guidance from DLGF or State Board of Accounts on something like this or is this?
It's all per State Board of Accounts. We've always had this option available. To my knowledge, it's never, we, the county has never invested in maturity dates longer than two years. I polled many of the treasures at our annual meetings and we're behind the eight ball. Everyone does it. But you have to go through the motions and get the paperwork up to date. And that's what we're here before, I'm here before you tonight to finalize.
Will, will you be seeing professional assistants for investment decisions?
Yes, actually, Ron West, Commissioner Ron West and I have met with two financial advisors who are very familiar with Indiana County Treasurers and what we're allowed to invest, invest in and what we're not. One of them is Jessica Redman. She's from Turquoise Wealth Management. She is an actual fiduciary. The other company that we're looking at is Stiefel Investments. The gentleman's name is Mark Davidson and he is an actual broker. I have reached out to Mike Reuter to see his opinions of, of this investment strategy and I don't have my glasses with me, so let me take just a moment. He is familiar with the name Stiefel. He trusts their investment advice. He actually uses them at the Hamilton Southeastern Schools for his bond work. He agrees that Luttering County Investments in longer maturity dates is a good strategy. He also has advised that the county is in a great financial position to make such investments. Ron West and I did ask if Mike Reuter could provide us with a number, a figure to work with that we could invest and remain liquid to meet the needs of the county and he's going to get back to us on that.
Great. Great work. Thank you.
Second, a motion by Pete, a second by Rob. All those in favor? I, I oppose.
Thank you very much.
While she's still at the podium, I'd like to make sure I can state what you sent us. 2019 and keeper's tax comparison to 2021, because who compare, who can compare 2021? Twenty nineteen in keepers tax comparison to twenty twenty one, because who compare, who can compare twenty twenty? This wasn't a year, it's good to compare anything. The in keepers tax, we collected two hundred and seventy eight thousand, over two hundred and seventy eight thousand additional compared to nineteen. And the stadium tax was six hundred and ninety eight thousand approximately more than two thousand nineteen. Which is feel good about that, don't you?
They were good numbers, yeah.
Yeah. Any comments on them?
They were really good numbers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is approval of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two and ordinance submitting ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one regarding Vassia Guardianship Fee Fund forty two zero three.
So Gina Johnson, county attorney. It, it hearkens back to what Judge Barton said about having to use some of the fee fund so that they can be eligible for the grant money. This just broadens the available uses of that fund so that they can accomplish their purposes.
I will motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash zero two as presented.
So a motion by Rob, a second by John Ed, all those in favor? I oppose. It passes. Old business, old and new business, discussion on road funding.
Luke Maston, highway supervisor. Been a long meeting and I have some good news, which is this isn't going to take very long, so.
I'll start your timer.
I said not very long. I'll find a way to stretch it out. Now, I've been working on kind of a comprehensive document that takes into account a lot of the different issues that we've discussed separately. Whether it's need for road reconstruction work in neighborhoods, whether it's need based off traffic pattern changes from I sixty nine. And need potentially to fund our federal aid projects that are currently ongoing. We talked about this a lot at the budget hearing last year. Essentially, we're at the point where with the projects that we currently have on the books, we will burn through our savings. We should be able to afford moving those forward and meeting our commitments to NDOT, but future federal aid projects, most likely we will not have the savings to fund those out of our NVH and LRS budgets. So we've had all of these separate conversations. What we're working on is a comprehensive document to give everyone an understanding of all of those concerns combined and what the funding need potential is. At this, my original intent was to present that this evening. Given the time and, and I think it's probably a good thing, I'm not quite ready to release that for public consumption. I still want to work a little bit on our cost estimates, so that will be coming soon, which will again give us the ability to wrap our arms around all of those challenges that we're facing. We try to figure out how to get those taken care of.
I do have a question for Commissioner. Not ARPA, but the infrastructure funds, is anybody getting anything about the federal infrastructure funds? Any hints starting to come out? Who's getting that? What funnel is it coming through?
Most likely, any federal infrastructure funding that comes to the local level will be managed by NDOT. Most likely, as an increase in what they already allocate annually towards the federal funding project application processes that we utilize.
So they'll take their chunk and?
Not necessarily. I'm sure, I'm certain a portion of that is will go to NDOT, but as they are the entity that distributes the other federal aid funding programs, and most likely this would just be an increase in the number of local projects that they're able to award funding to. But we would still follow the normal federal aid processes for, for project development and would still have a, a pretty significant local contribution that would be required in addition to the federal funds that are put towards those projects.
But is there anyone who's predicting, like they did with ARPA funds, what that pool is going to possibly be and when and it might be?
When, I think is an interesting question. I'm not sure the answer to that. There were fact sheets put out for each individual state that had an estimate of the different types of infrastructure, federal infrastructure funding that were coming to each state. But then how much of that is going to be distributed to the local federal aid program and when, I think, I'm sure NDOT is trying to figure out the details.
But I mean, did, has, have you seen, is it hundred million, two hundred million for Indiana or?
I, I've seen the fact sheets. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I, I will say the infrastructure bill, you know, we want to see as much road and bridge funding as we can. There's a lot of other funding towards other types of infrastructure. Telecom is a good example in that, so how that overall amount that the state will receive would be a portion to those different uses. I wish it was all coming in infrastructure for road and bridge, but it's not, so. Those fact sheets, I think, are available on the, the website. I can try to track them.
Yeah, which, which federal website I have selected. Thank you.
Federal Highway, I believe, has those. So, that wasn't too bad.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Luke, for the update. Welcome, Daniel. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
The Commissioner has something. One thing I would ask the council to take into consideration is we did the sour study, the commissioner did it last time. Is more beneficial, I think, to this body from the sour study with Irwin Wagner and Shealy. It's going to be more beneficial for you guys because otherwise it's just coming through us, so. I would like to see it on a, if it's a, whatever cycle it is, a three year cycle, two year cycle, but I would like to see that looked at because it's going to benefit you guys in the long run, everybody up there. And not so much us, I mean, we can advocate for our departments, but it's going to be better, better well suited in your plate than ours, so.
When did you do it? Two thousand nineteen? So now we're three years.
It's coming up. I would, I would, you know, you, you just heard something, you probably hear it every month about this is the external median, this is this, this is that. So it would give you something that is current because it's always going to be changing and I would strongly advise that. I'm done.
Question, though, don't you have to write the contract?
We can approve the contract if you guys pay for it.
Okay. One quick thing, I just remembered something that's come up a couple of times tonight. I'm sorry. No. No, this is going to take fifteen seconds. We get a lot of salary request adjustments, increases that they're asked to be retro. We don't have to make them retro. And I think if it's something that someone's moved to a position in the past and we're making up for a position change with change with from a salary increase, it's justifiable, but I, I don't know that we need to go two months back to pay someone for a raise. They just, they just got just something to think about. I don't think that's ever been brought up, but just for food for thought.
Good point, yep.
Do we have a motion?
Different times?
Yeah, on the different colors. Yes. The first, oh, John T, Rob, we're adjourned.